Can we please start with the roll call?
Council President McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn. She was at the Cal meeting, so she may join us. Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
And Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent, maybe late.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
Oh, never mind, I will not make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right.
All present then, sir.
Okay, thank you. First up, we have our administrative report. Right, good evening, everyone. City Hall is open for in-person services at our finance and police counters Monday through Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Our municipal court counter is open Thursday and Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., while hearings are conducted via Zoom. For more information, please visit our website. Renton History Museum will open its newest exhibit, With This Ring, on Wednesday, March 2nd. Using objects and photos from the museum's collection, With This Ring takes a historical look at marriage in Renton, from finding a partner to weddings, to working partnerships, to same-sex unions. The exhibit is the product of many years of research into Renton's varied unions and their remarkable stories. An exhibit from March 2nd, 2022, through October 19th, 2022. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic-impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/trap. While projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is the report. All right, thank you. Next, we'll open the remote audience comment period. Remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will begin five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of. You've been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. I believe we have a few signed up for today.
Mr. Mayor, we have eight people signed up to speak tonight.
Okay.
The first person is Winter Cashman. Winter, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Winter Cashman, speaking as a resident of Renton. Firstly, I wanted to thank you all for withdrawing the nomination of Ben Johnson. But I also need to sort of stress something that might be slightly uncomfortable, and that is that the idea of this person being nominated reinforces the notion sort of of a straight white boys' club in Renton, because it's uplifting someone who has made deranged and derogatory comments about almost every marginalized community in Renton, with no efforts to even do the simplest act of publicly apologizing while running for office and seeking the seat on the planning commission. Second, sort of related to the Equity Commission, the Equity Commission should be unanimously filled with people whose eyes are set on justice. Our city administration lacks diversity today, not just in the backgrounds of individuals who make up the administration, but also diversity of thought. And it worries me that while investigating the backgrounds of some of the folks selected here, it's revealed that some have given hundreds of dollars to people like Ben Johnson. Again, a person who's made no amends to the communities that he has disparaged and harmed. How are we supposed to believe that this administration values our communities, wants equity for our communities, when they're continuously propping up people who are affiliated to the groups disparaging our communities? The bar for the planning commission should be high, as it sets much of the decisions for the future of our city, and the bar for the Equity Commission should be even higher. I hope that the city will reflect on the process, where it seems like we are consistently getting straight white men to these positions on our commission, when we have a much richer, diverse city, where we should be having a wider array of people that we're selecting from. So I hope that the process will be reviewed, and that something more equitable and fair, with clear communication across all of the city's makeup, will be considered. Thank you.
The next person we have is Ally Cohen. Ally, go ahead.
Hey, I always ask this, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So my name is Ally Cohen, work and live in Renton. I wanted to say thank you for this Equity Commission. It's really incredible, if you think about like where we were a year ago, and I really want to hold on to that. I also wanted to piggyback on some of what Winter said, because I love this so much, like it's really important to me to really get it right. So, but my comment is more in the scope of like the optics and the communication. So I was part of, I applied, and it became clear to me during the interviews that the questions were really around people's lived experiences. And that was really great to me, and frankly, I don't have those lived experiences. And I felt like, wow, this is like really the right questions. This is really like getting at the root of this. Like, I really didn't have much to say, and like that was really like affirming to me of the work that the people who developed the questions did. The, I didn't realize until I read the memo, like how much time the guests on the panel like put into it. And then when I saw the rankings, I was really pleased at like, wow, this is like a really good system. This was really representative. And then really totally confused by some of, well, really just namely that Margarita scored among the highest and wasn't recommended. And I don't say that as to poo-poo anybody else who was on the committee, but I just wanted to stress that like with these other developments going on in the city and the confusion, like that the memo referred to an attachment, there was no attachment. I want to thank Councilmember Perez took a lot of time, like breaking it down to me. I was so like delusional in reading it, and I thought that the commission was expanded to 11 people, because that made more sense to me in like reading the communication that came out and seeing the rankings, that it just didn't occur to me that like, that that kind of would be undermined in the messy communication that came out and not moving Margarita forward. And I think it's really important to consider optics, especially with everything else going on in the city and the other developments going on, that like something as precious as this, like it's so precious that like we really take the time to be transparent in how it's being done and get it right, so that there isn't this kind of still rub of like, wait, but what? Where was this? Where did this come from? How come this person didn't advance? Like those types of questions. But overall, I still just really wanted to say like, I still see this as an incredible milestone for Renton, and I really hope other surrounding cities follow the lead on what's happening here. But again, you know, I can't, without constructive criticism of saying like, I still think there was some room for improvement in how it was rolled out, but so much gratitude to the people who put work in it, and it was really an incredible learning experience for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally, for your comments. And I think it's a good time now for me to thank everybody that was involved in the process. You know, the panel that worked through the interviews and all of the people who applied. I think we had 36 applications. It was a very, very difficult job that the panel had, putting together a list and narrowing it down to 15, because there were so many qualified people. And yes, the list they gave me had 11 names on it, and it was extremely difficult decision. And I really hope that frankly, the rest of the applicants apply next year. You know, we've done a staggered board, so there'll be slots open, and hopefully they'll get a chance to serve on this commission down the road. So, and let's go ahead and move on to our next.
The next speaker we have is Joseph Todd. Joe, go ahead.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Joseph Todd. I'm a resident here in Renton. So I also got a chance to take a look at the messages that followed the appointments for folks that are potentially going to be on the Equity Commission. And one of the big things that comes to my mind is equity. Equity is a part of building up a commission that is designed around people who are from marginalized communities. It's not a diversity commission. It's not about looking across the city of Renton and thinking about how we can make this commission as diverse as possible. It's about making sure that we look across this city and look across the different segments and understand those who are marginalized. And those who are marginalized need to have a seat on the Equity Commission. Also, I don't really like how the process went as well, because it was electronic, and it also said that you could mail a form in. What is that supposed to do for a person that's experiencing homelessness? Are they not, do they not have the right to be on Equity Commission? And Equity Commission is speaking for folks like that, that are experiencing homelessness. And we would really learn and be engaged by folks who are experiencing homelessness, be on that commission, actually help make policy that can help make their lives better. For me, we have to do the right things by this community. And for this to be a succinct and engaged commission, it has to represent the community, like it has to represent the community in a fashion that really looks across the board and grabs those folks that are marginalized. That did not happen in this case. And I can also tell by who was selected, if you just do a cursory end-up look, a lot of it was friends, family, and relatives. So we have to really think about what went down here, really think about how these selections were made, and really think about how we engage this community. Because it can't just be your friends sitting on a commission, making rules and making policy, or, well, they won't really make rules or policies. Well, they really, they will advocate for policy. And it can't be folks that are advocating for policy that are your friends that just want to do what you want to do. It has to be representatives. It has to be folks that can hold you accountable, and that did not happen. So from my perspective, it wasn't transparent. There wasn't multiple ways for folks to actually be able to fill out the form and be on the commission. And then the folks that got chose, I don't really understand the backgrounds and why they're on the commission. So from my perspective, it needs to be rebooted, it needs to start over from scratch. It needs to start over from scratch, do the interviews again, and really think about ways that you can engage this community in different ways, so that everybody can apply and have their voices heard. Thank you.
Well, the one thing I will say is I'm not sure about the statement about friends or family. Out of the 11 individuals that were nominated and sent to me, I did not know personally even one of them. So I'm not sure where the friend and family comes from, and we had an outside volunteer panel that did the interview. So I don't believe there are friends and family associated with them. And unfortunately, you know, it's unfortunate. There was a lot of people put a lot of effort, a lot of our community members put a lot of effort into the work done around putting this together. So who's our next?
The next person is Krista Strasba. Krista, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, President McGurven, and councilmembers. My name is Krista Strasba, and I'm a Renton resident. Included in tonight's consent agenda are Mayor Pavoni's nine appointments to the Renton Equity Commission. And as others have commented, the nine appointees were selected from a list of 15 applicants, including average ratings between 16 and 20.3. Asterisks were given to no endorsements for specific candidates from the panel members who interviewed them, and the document is titled Renton Equity Commission Panelist Summary. The ratings, I assume, and please correct me if I'm wrong, are based on valuable feedback from panel members who themselves are members of our diverse community. Thank you for shouting them out, Mayor. Excluding a youth applicant, it appears as though applicants with scores below 18 or without any asterisks were removed from consideration, resulting in a pool of 11 potential commission members. However, the final two applicants to be removed are Dr. Anna Jones and Margarita Biarial, both of whom scored higher and/or were more highly recommended by panel members than some folks who remained on the list. Both Dr. Jones and Margarita are civically engaged and have volunteered many hours in a variety of capacities in service of our community. You are likely at least acquaintances, but have probably worked together on local events and projects. Dr. Jones is Black, and Margarita identifies as Latina. Their removal by the mayor from consideration is deeply concerning and counterproductive on an initiative intended to increase equity. Moreover, the commission was initially requested by community members through the Stanford Justice Demands, co-sponsored by Renton Residents for Change and the Black Alliance for Equity, Inclusion, and Justice, formerly known as Renton King County Alliance for Justice, during the National Uprising for Black Lives. Constituents spent many meetings here with you, and also through public protests, advocating for explicitly anti-racist language in the city's business plan and an anti-racist lens within the commission. The city already has a task force in place dedicated to inclusion with a focus on diversity. This is good work, but different in that it is not designed to question how power and gatekeeping uphold normative practices that reinforce inequity. Dominant power always reinserts itself without accountability, and I fear that may be happening here even before the commission gets going. I think this is important, because we don't have to look far to see how the voices of women of color have been shut out of our systems, especially in political realms and political systems. We've seen a lot of progress, but it's after decades and decades of advocacy that's been led often by women of color. And when we look nationally and we see a nomination to the Supreme Court of a Black woman, I believe that we should be following suit and making similar decisions locally. With all of this in mind, I am asking that the Renton Equity Commission be expanded to 11 members, including Dr. Jones and Margarita, and/or that the commission be redesigned to function independently of the mayor. In the spirit of transparency, I'm also requesting that you please publish the summary, including ratings to the public. I agree that a great deal of work and really valuable feedback went into that document from fellow community members, and their voices deserve to be heard. The way that they ranked people, I think, is really important. And as I said before, Dr. Anna and Margarita were both scored higher and/or were more highly recommended by the panel members than some other folks who remained on the list. Thank you for your time.
Okay, before we move on, could we have Kriti Shridhar and Benita Horn promoted to panelists to kind of answer some of these? I think we're heading in kind of an unfortunate direction. I'd really like to have some clarification from staff. All right. Well, Kriti and Benita, could you tell the council, give them a brief overview of how the process went about, so that the rest of the council and the public can hear first hand?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did advertise for the openings on the Equity Commission. The press release was sent out on the 10th of November, and the applications were received until the 30th of November, 5:00 p.m. They could be sent in electronically via the website, but people could also call in, get an application form via mail, and could choose to deliver it in person or send it in via the post office. So it was not exclusive only for those who had web access. So we were making sure that people could provide this application anyway. We also made sure that all those who had submitted it by 5:00 p.m. were able to get an interview. So again, we tried very hard to make sure that this was open to all. In terms of representation and reaching out to see that there was as much, as many opportunities for us to get equity in the representation, while we did not specifically ask for people to, you know, check boxes as to which groups they represented. We did, you know, ask in terms of the questions of the interview to, you know, for people to share their experiences, their beliefs and values as it came to equity, and as much as they could offer in terms of their intersectionality of experience. We included the interview questions as part of the agenda, so that it would be something that everyone could review. In my memo to you, Mr. Mayor, which was also included in the agenda bill, we tried to provide as much information as possible, so that the process would be open and every element of it could be shared. In terms, as we shared with you, there was a lot of excitement that we had so many members of the public participate in and, you know, send in their applications. For us, this was another demonstration of how important this is and how much the Renton community wanted to be part of the process. As I shared in the memo to you and council, 27 finally chose to participate in the interview. We also tried to reach out to as much of a cross-section of our community to participate in being members of the panel. Now, since the 30th of November was the final date, we were reaching up to the holidays, and we sent out requests to members of the task force, community stakeholders. And it did require a significant amount of time from the panelists to participate. So even though originally we wanted to have interviews in December, that was almost impossible with the holidays. So we established the interviews in January. We got nine panel members, and then we divided up the interviews among the applicants. And we also gave the applicants plenty of choice, so that we could accommodate their needs. As you had requested from us, we gave you a list of 11 finalists. And I also want to let you know that the panelists had two debriefing sessions, where they came back with the list of 15. One of the audience comments was how come that was not included in the agenda packet? We have since then provided that list of 15. One of the challenges in our computer system to include that was there's a DocuSign process by which lists are, the agenda packets are included. And unfortunately, in including that, there was a challenge to include that particular document. But we've now included that, and I also sent another document to give a little bit more detail on the panel members, because that was also asked of me. So that's another single-page document I've included. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you had a final decision to make between the 11 and the nine. And some of the questions, the last audience comment member made was, I know it was a really difficult decision. The only thing is the ordinance did require to have representation from a youth member. So that was one requirement that had to be maintained in the final decision. And I realized that there were some other, not requirements, but, you know, reasons that you were considering, including having a senior member, balancing some, you know, gender choices. And I do believe, even though we didn't ask these questions specifically, that there is representation from, you know, some of our communities, such as the African-American community, the Latina community, and certainly a nice range of thought in terms of values of equity and the issues we are experiencing and need to address. I'll leave it to Benita to answer any more questions. And I'm always here to, you know, address any issues or questions. What I will say is that it was a very interesting process, a very satisfying process. I know it was a challenging process, but we went into it with our whole intention of doing our best.
Thank you. And Benita, you, I know you and I discussed the formation of this kind of group early on when I was first elected. And could you just give us just a really quick, brief update on what our process was in the formation from the start and the effort that we made to try and be community-driven?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I guess I have to share, to be quite candid, that I've actually bragged about this process in Renton to some of the other groups that I support in other communities. Because it was, from the beginning, when you begin exploring the possibility of an Equity Commission, I remember your saying to all of us, "One of the things I do not want to do is to be prescriptive about this process. I really want to hear from community." And so to that end, you asked me to coordinate, and I did set up meetings with different groups in the community, based on ethnicity, gender identity and expression, business community, age, et cetera, so that you could discuss the possibility of an Equity Commission and get their input on what they thought should be taken into consideration in forming such a commission. And further, you directed staff to take that input and draft the ordinance that was ultimately adopted, that created the commission. There was great recognition on the part of many of those groups that, first of all, that they felt the commission should be a smaller body of people, so that every voice could be heard at every meeting, and people would have a chance to fully express their ideas. And given that, that it would be impossible to have representation from, you know, each and every possible community in the city. But they still felt that that was stronger. They felt that if there was a leaning in a direction, it should be toward those residents who had built bridges and built relationships with multiple communities, as demonstrated by their history of work in Equity. And very strongly that any applicants, candidates for the commission should have demonstrated their commitment to Equity in some way. And as you all see, that actually went into the, that particular issue was one of the questions that applicants were asked. So it was a very different process than I've experienced in other jurisdictions, where perhaps a similar process would have been more prescriptive. There was a lot of attention paid to and weighted to what residents in the community said they felt was important about this commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming and clarifying.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask a question to Benita or Kriti, but if not, we can set aside a different time for questions.
I believe it's fine to ask a question.
Okay. I just wanted to collect, from Benita, based on a question that we received, that we didn't provide the opportunity for people that are homeless to participate in the process. When I'm checking the list, I see one person that identified as, as formerly homeless. Am I correct on this or not? If you can share a little bit more of this experience, I will appreciate it. Benita, Pretty, thank you.
Yes, well, that was input from one of the applicants, Councilmember Perez, that one person shared. And, and recognize that these weren't questions that we specifically asked, but the panel member, panel members were so conscientious that whatever responses applicants shared in their interviews, they noted. And there was a candidate whose panel noted had, had shared the experience of having at one time been unsheltered.
And if, if I may add in addition, in terms of outreach of the, sent the message of accept, of posting in addition to obviously the press release and the mayor's newsletter, we sent out the information through all our networks, including, you know, the different human service agencies, the, you know, networks through all the lists that we maintain. So, I mean, even though we didn't visit the encampments or areas, we're hoping that through all the efforts that we used, that, you know, there were ways for a larger group in the community to receive this. And then one last thing I wanted to add because this is something that just happened. But some of the people who didn't make the final nine, but made the other cuts and they contacted us, we contacted them back to offer other opportunities. And we actually received some very positive feedback, interest in either other commissions or certainly some of the other groups that we have. So I think overall, we've heard quite a lot of, we've generated a lot of interest and we believe that, you know, it's, it's great for the city and community that we've already got some of the folks signing up for other opportunities with the city.
You know, one, one of the things that I might add is that this, I, I can only, you know, only imagine how difficult this decision would have been for you, Mr. Mayor. It was equally as difficult for the, the panel members. We have such a deep bench in this city of people who are passionate about and have demonstrated experience in equity. That it was, you know, it was not a matter of, of rejecting people but simply acknowledging that there were limitations such as the number of commissioners who could be appointed. There, there are a great number of residents in this city with the capacity to serve and, and I hope at some future point get the opportunity to serve on this commission. But it was not an easy decision for anyone to get to a final list.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Benita, thank you, Pretty. I don't want to be out of order, so, so if I comment, extra comment, I will make it the final public comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Pretty, thank you, Benita. I just felt it was really important to get that clarified. There was so much work put into putting this together from our community members that volunteered their time and effort. It's just, it's unfortunate that there was some misunderstanding and I would hate for any of them to feel impugned by, by the process, so. Okay, we are on to the next. I should probably comment. We have, we have a couple more here.
Yes, the next speaker is Sanjeev Yonson. Sanjeev, go ahead.
Hello, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and all the council members. My name is Sanjeev Yonson. I'm a Renton resident. And I also consider myself as a social helper to the Nepalese community of Renton and Bellevue. Professionally, I'm a small business owner and I volunteer to the Renton Regional Fire Authority as a civil service commissioner. Today, I'm here to talk about few issues. You know, just correct me, I'm not trying to just make some kind of argument or some kind of, you know, that kind of comments. But I will start by acknowledging the fault of the council members and the mayors for the service and the dedication that in last few weeks we have seen. Since the crime rate is still increasing, it's so important to have body cameras for the law enforcement personnel. These body cameras are an opportunity for the transparency. I really appreciate everyone's support and effort on this topics. I understand, you know, there has been lots of questioning, lots of stress, lots of discussions about the transparency. But, and, and, you know, as an individual who has experience of violence, I understand how important a video record is to everyone's safety. I want to add a little bit here because I'm originally from Nepal. So in my birth country, Nepal, tens of thousands of people were killed in a bloody civil war. I fled overseas and ended up in working in the very, you know, danger zone, war zone in Iraq. In 2004, I was in one of the several vans en route to the U. S. Military Camp in Iraq. Iraqi insurgents intercepted one of the vans carrying twelve Nepalese people. Those Nepalese people were kidnapped and brutally murdered. You know, after this narrow escape, I understand, I know the importance of the safety. I'm so grateful to the Renton law enforcement, the police department for their efforts to keep us safe. You know, they always push themselves in frontline to make sure we, our family and our entire community is safe. And I also like to appreciate our community leaders and local government board in recognizing the Black History Month. Since, you know, I have some concerns here I really want to bring up today. Since the pandemic started, you know, I understand the fault of the local government has taken not keeping us safe, you know, trying very hard to find the resources to meet the residents' need. Thank you, everyone, for doing that. But after the vaccines was released, you know, many people were vaccinated and the illness, the rate of the illness were reduced, you know. Small businesses started to reopen, private companies began to flourish. And most importantly, schools began to do in-person classes. I have a seven-years-old son, so he goes to in-person school every day. And, you know, I know that lots of parents are the same for the kids to in-person classes every day. But, Mr. Mayor and council member, you know, I have a big frustration here because one of my community members who was having a hard time in renewing his permit through the public office, you know, he made several calls, emails, no response. He came to me for the help. I tried several times to reach out to the office, but no responses. And I drove down to the office, you know, all I had to do is just keep calling, you know. So I was like, the big fear, yeah, I'm just trying to ask to the elected officer, what is the big fear is? The small businesses, they have no problem to reopen it because they can survive with reopening schools. We have to send our kids. Otherwise, we, you know, the parents can't do, you can't, you know, just go to work. So I don't have enough time here. I'm sorry, it's my first time, so I was kind of very slow here. I want to bring your attention to the American Rescue Plan here, this fund here. As a small business owner, I know how hard these times have been with COVID. It's not easy to survive, especially the small businesses. I really appreciate the body cam and then all those stuff, but, you know, the $600,000 was not enough to, for the small businesses. I'm sorry, I don't have a time, but thank you for hearing me tonight. Can I speak more? Can I, can I speak more or do I, do I need to end my?
Oh, can you wrap, yeah, you want to wrap up your thought?
Do you mind if I just get another few minutes?
No, actually, we have to move on to the next caller. But if you, if you want to finish up your thought really quick, the other thing we can do is we can have staff certainly get your information and I can reach out to you to personally offline here and see if we can help you out.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
The next person we have to speak is Kathleen Powell.
Kathleen, you're still muted if you're talking.
There we go.
There you go.
You would think after a year Zoom would be my friend, but it's not. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I have a little different topic tonight. My name is Kathleen Powell. I'm a Renton resident and I'm speaking about the proposed retail set, retail pet sales ordinance. I know I'm putting the puppy before the cart, so to speak, but I just want to say that I'm so happy to hear that the retail pet sales ordinance is moving its way to the city council via the planning commission and the planning committee. This is fabulous news to all of us who have been bringing this situation to the city's attention for a year now. I'm very pro-small business, having owned one for over fifteen years. But a business needs to add value to the community. Overpriced pups, often sick or with genetic defects sourced from puppy mills with little to no oversight, sold at eyebrow-raising price tags in excess of $5,000 and interest rates over 100% does little to elevate a community. There's no value in a business selling this kind of product except to the millers, brokers, owners, paid lobbyists and employees involved. There is animal abuse tied to these sales. We may not see what goes on at the puppy mills, but we have seen enough reporting about it. Just Google puppy mills and you will see for yourself. We have the power to stop this coming into our community. I invite you to tune in tonight to Cairo at 11:00 P. M. and watch Jesse Jones investigative report on this business. Part two is next Monday. One reporter summed it up best saying, "This business is legal but not ethical." Is this really the kind of business we want in Renton? I ask you to please support the retail pet sales ordinance when it is presented to you. Thank you.
The next person we have is Diane Dobson. Diane, go ahead.
Good evening. I will defer my audience comment to written communications sent into administration. Thank you very much.
The last person that we have is Gina Carey. Gina, are you there?
Yes, I just couldn't find the unmute button. Good evening, Mayor Pavoni and distinguished council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gina Carey. I am a Renton resident voter and an animal advocate. I, along with my fellow animal advocates, have been waiting with bated breath for Renton to pass a humane ordinance. I appreciate all the hard work that has been put into this. Just as a quick timeline review, on January 27th, 2021, Bailing Out Benji contacted the Renton City Council about passing a humane ordinance. On February 8th, Bailing Out Benji contacted the Renton City Council, making them aware that Puppyland was preparing to open a pet store here in Renton selling puppy milk puppies. On February 12th, 2021, Puppyland opened their doors and started selling puppy milk puppies here in Renton. On March 8th, the Renton City Council referred retail pet sales to the planning commission. On July 27th, Puppy Milk, Puppyland obtained a business license over five months after opening. I don't understand why they were allowed to do business without a license and without regulations, but they did. In the meantime, at the state level, HB 1424 had its first reading on January 29th, 2021. Governor Inslee signed HB 1424 on April 16th with an effective date of July 25th, 2021, accomplished in seven months. The passing of HB 1424 caused the Renton Planning Commission some concerns about potential impacts and delayed forward movement of the retail pet sales regulations. On August 18th, the Renton Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed retail pet sales regulations. On December 15th, the Renton Planning Commission announced they will be pursuing a humane ordinance in response to public outcry. Personally, I am thrilled that we are in agreement and doing the right thing. On January 19th, 2022, it was announced that in the anticipation of a lawsuit, starting the hearing process for the humane ordinance is again delayed. I do not understand why we continue to allow Puppyland to do business, making money so they can file a lawsuit against us. Let's stop the madness. So what I want to know is where do we go from here? How many more steps are there and what's the timeline? My personal goal is that Puppyland is no longer selling puppies by the Fourth of July, 2022, this year. Is that possible? Thank you. I appreciate you listening to me.
Okay.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Was that everybody?
Yep, that's it. That's all I.
All right, agenda back. Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody that took the time to call us today and I want to address a little bit the concerns about the, the Puppyland. Today, we have a planning commission, no, planning committee, I'm sorry. When we were, I specifically had that question. I asked if they can provide me with a timeline. The city attorney said by two weeks, they will have ready the papers to start the process of public hearing and bring it to the, to the planning commission. Personally, I've been very, I have been very outspoken, sharing my feelings about, in my frustrations and my empathy with so many people that have called us and have emailed us. It's not a secret that I am a, that I'm very much a person that all my life have to protect the rights of animals. So I know how complicated has been this process. And yes, it's frustrating that it has taken us almost a year. But I have to tell you that today, staff shared with us that if we're going to do this, we have to do it right. And it's a lot of legal implications in this kind of ordinance. But the, the, what we heard today of planning commission is that in two weeks, we will start the process. The process, as they may know, is, people that don't know, is first public hearing, then it goes back to planning commission, referred to council, and then the vote of the council. Planning and then the vote of the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are on to the consent agenda. There are six items for council consideration. Are there any items that council members would like polled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurbin.
Seeing on, I move that the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurbin, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council approved the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And we are on to unfinished business. Council President McGurbin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has one committee report.
Okay, Transportation Committee, committee report, addendum number 7-22 to lease agreement 13005 with the Landing Gear Works, T. L. G. W. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute amendment 7-22 to L. A. G., which is a lease agreement. to LAG, which is a lease agreement, 13-005 with the Landing Gear Works. Such authorization will have an initial increased annual economic impact of $38,309.69 and would benefit the city and TLGW respectively by bringing current land rental rate and reestablishing TLGW the opportunity to continue their growth and provide services to the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I move that the council concur with committee committees' report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Councilmember Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business. No unfinished business, Mayor Pavon.
Okay, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has two reports.
Okay, Finance Committee committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. Finance Committee approves the following payments. Counts payable total payment of $4,841,897.65 for a number of vouchers and payroll withholding vouchers, no wire transfers. Payroll total payment of $1,584,51.43 for payroll vouchers, including 607 direct deposits and 14 checks. This is the, this is for January 1st through, it says January 31st pay period. Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $51,527.67 and municipal court vouchers totaling $13,880.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final report is regarding a fuel tax grant agreement for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase 4 project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the fuel tax grant agreement in the amount of $5 million with the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board and all subsequent agreements necessary to accomplish the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase 4 project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. All right, next up is legislation. We have one ordinance for second and final reading.
Okay, this ordinance is regarding docket item 206, which is the multifamily tax exemption extension. So an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 41220B and 41220D of the Renton Municipal Code by extending to the Rainier Grady Junction TOD subarea and South Lake Washington subarea the multifamily housing property tax exemption, adopting the eligible areas for multifamily housing incentives map, authorizing corrections and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second reading, requires a roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
And Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Next up is new business. Council President McGurven.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I would just made a couple meeting announcements. The first one is Monday, March 7th. We did not have a substantial amount or any time-sensitive items for the council meeting. So we made the decision, unless anyone absolutely wants to get together to cancel that meeting. Both, so we won't have a council meeting or committee hold meeting on Monday, March 7th. I'm sure we might have the opportunity to make it up later in the year, though, if we really want to. Then, so the, the next council meeting will then be on Monday, March 14th at 7:00 PM via video conference. And we will not, also not have a committee at the hall that day. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Perez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning Development Committee has a meeting on Monday, March 14th at 5:00 PM. We have two items on the agenda. Appointment to Planning Commission Jeffrey Kelly and emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business. None of business.
Oh, we, I think we got enough of it. Okay, Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Transportation Committee, we have a meeting tomorrow, March 1st, Tuesday at 5:00 PM via video conference. And our topic is compensation and final approval of Shalane Avenue Northeast street location petition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Albertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee will meet tomorrow, March 1st, at 3:30 via video conference.